Good evening, everyone. I'll call our Committee of the Whole meeting to order here in Council chambers at 6:00 PM. Roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy.
Present.
Macias.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
McNeil.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
I don't believe we have any remote electronic attendance, so we move to public comment. To public comment, who's first?
Emily Cummings.
All right, Emily, come on up.
Art.
No, great order. However, my name is Arthur Bodenbender. I run and operate Katie's Import Foods on 7th Street, Moline. And I do have a few opinions because I am, as a food merchant, I am concerned about the food tax. Unfortunately, my opinion to begin is was when when a city or government wants to levy a tax on the populace, this should be headline news. Instead, I feel the city of Moline has taken a soft approach, a very quiet approach, to this by not putting the issue on the agenda according to my alderman, my alderman, alderwoman in my case, until just the day before it was to be.
That's a false statement, I'm sorry. That's an absolutely false statement, as is that it wasn't front page news. It was a headline news story on The Dispatch. But I'm not here to argue with you, I'm here to listen.
No, I'm saying.
So, please continue.
It should be headline news when it's going to be discussed, not a month or two beforehand. It should be right at the time. I know that it was coming up, that's why I asked my alderwoman. And she told me at that time when I called her, it was one or two days before it was discussed in the council, that it is not on the immediate agenda as far as she knew. And then called me back the next day or two and said, "Oh, it's just been put on the agenda for the following council," which didn't give me or anybody else a free chance to respond or to come and voice her opinion. Unfortunately, I was out of town for the next two council meetings, so therefore I could not be here. But I'm here tonight to voice my opinion. And I would wager to say that if we took a vote in the city of Moline, they would agree, the majority would agree with me. Number one, taxing food, in my opinion, is a regressive tax. It's an unfair tax. We need to buy food to eat, to live, and pay taxes. Number two, 1% is not a lot of money. But it is a lot of money to families with a lot of children. It is also a big incentive for city peoples in the city of Moline to cross our beautiful bridge and spend their food dollars in Iowa when they're buying their gas at a lower tax. And number three, you know this food tax was a gift from the state of Illinois. It was not enacted by the city, it was acted by the state of Illinois as a total gift to the cities, to the cities and the state. Now, they have decided to drop that, leaving the option up to the cities. Remember, it is, it was a gift to begin with. It is also a difficult, now how could I say this? It is unfair to the merchant who will now continue to be an unpaid tax collector. Okay? And it's very unfair for merchants that have multiple items in their store, like a hardware stores. Their primary sales are in hardware, but they do have food available. And they have to keep double books, tax on their hardware, tax on food. My next contention is when a family has a loss of income, what do they do? They tighten their belt or they look for other income. The city of Moline can do the same. There are other ways to raise income, taxes on things like automobiles, furniture, appliances, entertainment, and lodging. These are things that are not necessarily, are not necessary enough, but people choose to purchase them and pay the tax without any anger, I should say. There are other things that the city can do, in my opinion, better use of funds, undesigned funds, like the telephone tax, the utility tax that comes in. The money that the city receives from water towers, towers on the water towers. As I understand, these funds just go into the general fund.
Well, we can certainly correspond with you because that's not quite how it works, those.
I was told by a former city administrator that that's usually what happens.
Well, we appreciate your thoughts.
No, I'm not done, ma'am.
I understand and I neglected to tell you there's a three-minute limit on public comment. And because I neglected to tell you that, I will let you continue, but please keep that in mind.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. My next thought is cities are in competition one with the other. Moline would like dollars to be sent here, people to live here. I just want to make a funny little statement. Wouldn't it be neat to have a bumper sticker that says, "Moline, the only Quad City that does not pay tax, food tax." And my final thought is, I'm sure all the officials here, elected or appointed, are here for one reason, to make it better for the city of Moline and to do the best thing for the city of Moline. But it's beyond mine to think that this council would take what was an absolute gift and is now an absolute tax. I am disappointed, shame on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bodenbender. Ms. Cummings is next. So you have three minutes and we have a little timer up there that'll let me know.
Hopefully, we won't take the full three minutes. My name is Emily Cummings and this is Heather Anderson. We work with Birth to Five Illinois, so I wanted to come just for a few minutes and share about the work that we're doing. Birth to Five Illinois was created because we wanted to understand how we could make our state the best state to raise a child. We want our system to be simpler, fairer, and better, easier for families to navigate. What we've heard from families in Moline is that it's hard to find quality childcare, right? Long wait lists, and childcare is really, really expensive. So what we do is we go out to community, we talk to families, and we try to put smart goals into impact, into action, so we can make things better for families. Some of the work that we're doing really revolves around three specific principles. First is optimizing the workforce. People can't go to work if they don't have childcare, right? So we want to try to make sure that our early childcare teachers have the skills and practical applications that they need to be able to work with children. That includes reflective practice. So one of the things we're really pushing and trying to get started is reflective practice, both for training and leaders, directors in childcare centers. Another element that we are working on is streamlining service coordination. One of the things we've heard a lot, even we went and presented in front of parent mentors today. We're talking to a family who was like, "My friend is a refugee, she had a four-month-old baby. There was emergencies happening and she had nowhere to take her little baby." And so we said, we had been talking to them about how we need in our region a crisis nursery. We need a place where families who don't have support can drop off their child to be able to get the emergency respite that they need so that they can work on getting housing, fleeing domestic violence situations, or doing the things that they need to. Sometimes it's just a mental health break, right? "I need to go to the laundromat and do laundry and my four-month-old has been crying for the last 12 hours," right? We need to have systems of support in our region that really work to help families. And then the third one is mental and behavioral health. We have seen so much go around about mental and behavioral health, but that's not just for kids. It's for teachers and staff, too. So many directors are saying, "I'm spending so much time with my staff who need help that they have to come in on weekends and nights to do their day job." So how can we support the mental and behavioral health of our workforce? We're saying that that can be through offering and understanding what EAPs could do, employee assistance programs. We're also navigating what we can do as far as training and assistance. Thank you so much for letting us come and chat.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment, Chief? Okay. So we move to our oath of office. Excuse me. Oath of office for regular commissioned appointment as firefighter/paramedic to Seth Wallace effective February 13, 2025. Chief?
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, members of council. It's my pleasure to introduce firefighter Seth Wallace to you tonight. Seth grew up in Princeton, Illinois, graduated from Princeton High School in 2019. After graduation, he pursued further education at Illinois Valley Community College, where he focused on biology, computer sciences, and ENT-based courses. His passion for emergency services led him to work for Peru EMS before joining the Princeton Fire Department as a part-time firefighter. Seth's dedication to the fire service and emergency medical care ultimately brought him to the Moline Fire Department, where he was hired on December 4, 2023. Prior to his hiring, he enrolled in paramedic school at OSF in Rockford, officially finishing his training on February 13 of this year. In addition to being a licensed paramedic, he holds credentials from the Illinois State Fire Marshal's Office as a basic operations firefighter and in hazardous material operations. Seth is joined here tonight by his parents, Damian and Angie, his grandparents, his two brothers and sister, and his girlfriend Emily. The honors of swearing in, firefighter Wallace.
You want to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Seth Wallace.
I, Seth Wallace.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
To the rank of firefighter/paramedic.
To the rank of firefighter/paramedic.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And the city of Moline.
And the city of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of firefighter/paramedic.
The duties of firefighter/paramedic.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline.
According to the best of my.
According to the best of my.
I could real quick just have a thirty mile.
Congratulations.
Don't be shy. Anyone else? We all want to take a picture.
Okay. Our next item of business are board appointments. Mayor's reappointment of Nina Little to the Moline Commission on Youth for a three-year term to expire March 1, 2028. Mayor's reappointment of Joseph Ton to the Moline Commission on Youth for a three-year term to expire March 31, 2028. And mayor's appointment of Denver Schmidt to the Keep Moline Beautiful Commission for a three-year term to expire November 30, 2027. Any questions? We have to send a thank you to Andy Parr for filling in before Denver moved into this spot, so. Questions on the agenda? I don't believe we have any. So we move to our Committee of the Whole agenda items. 8.1, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to an agreement with Tri-City Electric Company of Iowa for Moline Water Treatment Plant electric service improvements, contract 2024-02, that includes replacement and translocation of transformers at the drinking water treatment plant for the amount of $298,856,000. And authorizing the interim director of utilities to execute any necessary documents related to this work. Mr. Vitas?
Madam Mayor, members of council, staff is recommending approval.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? This is related to the update we received several weeks ago, correct?
Correct, and the document signed that you continued to receive.
Yes. Thank you. Any further conversation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.2, a resolution approving change order number one and final with McCarthy Improvement Company for Project 1451, 48th Street Reconstruction for the amount of $33,730.90. Mr. Vitas?
Staff is recommending approval of the change order, final change, first change order and final order, change order with McCarthy Improvements for the project on the 48th Street Hill.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. A resolution authori, sorry, 8.3, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a contract with Porter Brothers Construction, Inc. for Project 1478, 2025 Asphalt Maintenance Program for the amount of $301,380,000. And approving the expenditure of funds not to exceed the budgeted amount of $350,000 for asphalt maintenance projects and said expenditures will be presented to council as a change order for approval increasing the contract value.
Madam Mayor and members of council, we are recommending approval of the contract with Porter Brothers Construction based on their bid, which is well below the budgeted amount for the current fiscal year.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. A resolution approving the special event application for the Quad Cities Distance Classic Event scheduled for Sunday, May 11, 2025, that is sponsored by the Corn Belt Running Club, authorizing a grant to the Corn Belt Running Club for the amount of $500 from the Special Events Fund for event marketing efforts. Closing certain streets more particularly described herein to vehicular traffic and authorizing the use of public right-of-way in conjunction with said event.
Staff is recommending approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. 8.5, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Administration of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section 2-4600, commissioned established by enacting one new Section 2-4600, dealing with the same subject matter.
I would ask the city attorney, Mr. Atkins, to respond to both 8.5 and 8.6.
In looking at the appointment for Mr. Schmidt, we actually discovered that there was an inconsistency between Section 24600 and the section immediately following it. One section said there were seven members and a staff project coordinator. The next section said that there were seven members, including a member of staff, an employee. We had only ever had one staff member involved with this committee. And so we discussed with the mayor what the proper way was to do this in order to clean it up with what we'd been doing. And we opted for eliminating the project coordinator position, since there had never actually been such a position in fact. So what this does is simply cleans up the language to be consistent with our past practice.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.6, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Administration of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section 2-2207, Order of Business by enacting one new Section 2-2207, dealing with the same subject matter.
With regards to this one, my explanation in your packet is maybe a little bit misleading. We have done two things here. One is exactly what it says in your packet, making the agenda in the ordinance consistent with the agenda as it's usually prepared and has been prepared for quite some time. That part is completely accurate, that is what we're doing. One thing that we are adding, however, is the remote electronic attendance. Technically, the Committee of the Whole and the city council meeting are separate meetings. If you ever had a situation where you had someone who was attending remotely for the Committee of the Whole, technically you would need to also authorize them for the city council meeting as well. So you will now have remote electronic attendance, if necessary, on both meetings, so that if you have someone who can't make it for the Committee of the Whole, presumably they couldn't make it for city council either, and you would probably need to be able to authorize them. And if you didn't have it in the agenda, it would potentially be illegal to do that. So this is make sure that you're in compliance with state law. The second thing is public comment. We had it on your agenda twice on the agenda order and three times when you're combined with the Committee of the Whole. So I took the liberty of rearranging things so that you will have your public comment at the beginning for your Committee of the Whole, and you will still have it at the end of the meeting for the city council. And this way, you'll be able, without the mayor needing to reorganize things, you'll be able to do a single omnibus vote with regards to appointments and consent agenda. Right now, the way the order is listed in the ordinance, it would require you to break those up with public comment in the middle.
Which is how we did it last time, following our ordinance, right?
Exactly.
Makes it smoother, is what you're saying? Okay. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second. All right. That was Finch and Castro. Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you. Certainly, the reordering and cleaning things up as we get into our practices, that part makes a lot of sense. I'm not willing to remove public comment at the beginning of the council meeting. And the reason for that is because on nights when we have a roundtable meeting, that would leave the only opportunity for public comment, since there is no Committee of the Whole meeting, to be at the very end of the meeting. So I think, and I agree with you, four instances over the course of a regular meeting night is probably too many. I think we could go back and maybe remove the second one from the cow, perhaps? Or we just deal with it, it shows up four times. But my concern is that on those nights we're in, with only a council meeting that requires people waiting to the end, and then they wouldn't actually be able to comment on what we're talking about on the roundtable.
I have a question for Mr. Schmidt on that. Would it make sense, because we have fewer roundtables where that would be the case, to pass this as recommended, but then make the motion that you all are allowed to make to change the order for that particular meeting? To put the public comment in the beginning?
I would not support that.
Okay. Just checking.
The reason that we have asked for this change, the mayor always has the ability, under your ordinances and under the general authority of mayors, as presiding officers, to alter the agenda so long as all of you don't object to that and hold a vote to overturn her decision to change the order of the agenda. So you would be able to have public comment at the beginning if you wanted. The problem is, staff, we don't have the ability to alter the agenda. We have to prepare it the way that the ordinance says to. So it was getting a little bit confusing, like when we had Mr. McNeil taking over briefly the one meeting. We had to prepare it in the way that we should according to the ordinance, and then it became a bit unwieldy. So I still would recommend to make the change in the way that I have prepared it. With the ability for those meetings that are outside of your Committee of the Whole and council meeting combined, you could still have public comment at the beginning. It would simply take the presiding officer saying, "We're going to allow public comment at the beginning." And it could still be done. It's just that, otherwise this way, we're putting the agenda together in a way that we know we're not going to follow. And I just don't like the idea, as a staff member, of intentionally preparing an agenda that we know is not going to be followed in the way in which we're preparing it.
I agree completely with getting it out of the middle of the consent agenda. That piece of the process, absolutely. And if we feel the need to limit it to three in an evening, then by all means bring back, we can bring forward a change to remove it from the cow. I am not willing to entrust to all future councils in perpetuity that they would enact a public comment. I think the public comment needs to have its place of prominence, needs to be the start of every meeting without exception. And so I am about to make a motion for reinserting it at a different place. Because I agree with you, the place it is causes problems. I mean, I have no problem with the change there. My question is, is there an issue with whether it would happen prior to consent agenda or after consent agenda? Or is that, that just doesn't matter?
I would certainly have no legal basis for complaining about that. Any issue would be, one, simply of convenience for the members of the council and for the public. Having it in the middle of consent agenda and appointments, that creates a problem. But having it either before or after, I think either way would work.
I'd like to make a motion to amend this change to reinsert public comment after the establishment of quorum. Which is immediately before, I'm sorry.
After roll call?
I intended to place it after remote electronic. I'd like to restate my motion. I'd like to make an amendment to insert public comment after remote electronic attendance, if necessary, and before consent agenda.
Second. One second. Okay. So that was motion by Schmidt, seconded by Timian. Pardon me. Discussion on that amendment? Do you all understand what it's doing? Allowing public comment at the beginning, rather than having to wait till the end. Yes, Mr. Macias?
How, is there anything unintended that might happen if we do this right now? How, well, is there anything unintended that might happen if we do this right now? Or any dumb pursuing things that?
I, I can't think of any negative consequences, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of this amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment passes. We're back to the motion as amended. Any further conversation, Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, um, I just, knowing that this came up because from looking at different meeting structures, I had looked back at our last, um, roundtable. And those are traditionally listed as sort of like their own number in place. So, that's just one of the where that is, like the mayor's giving direction, we're adding it on those evenings? Or should it be under a he- I just, or do we need to add something here? This wasn't matching up to what we were doing on those evenings either.
I don't, I don't think that it is necessary, because those meetings are conducted, uh, with no actual items to be voted on. If we had a situation, and I, I understand from talking to other staff that there have been times where, uh, items to be voted on were, that would be insult, uh, inserted into those kinds of meetings on occasion. If that were to happen, it is possible that, uh, we would have to make sure that this exact agenda was, uh, prepared in order to comply with the ordinance. Outside of that situation, where there was something to be voted on, inserted into that type of agenda, it would not have to be in accord with this, because it would be a, a different type of proceeding. It would not be one where actions were to be taken, and that's really what this agenda is covering.
All right, any further comment on the item as amended? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. All right, so we're to eight point seven. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement of purchase and sale with Metropolitan Towers LLC for two properties located at fifteen, fifteen hundred Seventh Street, Moline, Illinois, and fifteen oh eight Seventh Street, Moline, Illinois, for a purchase price of seven hundred and five thousand dollars. Why can't I read these anymore? Seven hundred and fi- seven hundred and five thousand five hundred dollars. And authorizing all appropriate city officials, officers, corporation council, and staff to do all things necessary to complete each of the city's responsibilities and enforce each of the city's expected benefits as referred to in such agreement. Mr. Vitas?
And the mayor, members of council, um, item eight point seven, which the mayor has just read, as well as item eight point eight, as well as item eight point nine, those separate are all related to the same project. And, uh, just looking back, uh, in time, going back to twenty twenty-one and well into twenty twenty-two, is where the discussions really, really started with respect to the need to replace the central fire station. It has been in every budget since that time, and it was based upon an analysis that was done specifically, uh, on the building itself. And as you know, the building was built back in nineteen seventy-two. It was built as a joint police and fire facility, um, only to become a fire facility when the new police department was built, leaving behind the fire station and, um, as well as the firing range that was down below. At some point, when the police department was also built, the one building that is in the parking lot, directly on the corner, was removed. And, um, operationally financed was moved into the for, ground level of the fire station, as well as IT. So, that's who currently occupies the building. It's the finance department, as well as the, uh, information technology equipment. The team is located here in City Hall, and then the fire department itself. The study did reveal at that time that the building required, uh, at that time, anywhere between eight to nine million dollars worth of repair. Most of that repair was very specifically orientated or related to the failing HVAC systems throughout the building. We were, we encountered difficulty with the age of the equipment, because the equipment itself could not be replaced. So, we had been custom ordering and manufacturing parts to keep the building functional and operational, on a year-round basis. Most recently, uh, you know, as we were moving this project through the process, we also had, had a major leak last year. That leak actually was, you know, within several feet of all of the city's IT equipment and destroyed one of the offices adjoining it right next door. So, fortunately for us, we didn't lose all of our IT equipment, uh, which is a whole different issue. So, needless to say, we went ahead and we, um, authorized the fire chief, uh, at the time to go ahead and work with the Illinois Association of Fire Chiefs, um, and conduct the, uh, fire location analysis report or study, which is a comprehensive study of all of our existing facilities, uh, central fire stations. Stations one, two, three, and four, at the time, were included in that study. And that study did reveal that the ideal location for the replacement of the central fire station was, uh, in the neighbor, in the vicinity or neighborhood of the intersection of Seventh Street and Twelfth Avenue. So, initially, we were looking at the property that is owned by the city, which is the park property, where the baseball fields are, across from the Butterworth Center. And, um, where little Stevie actually has his, his food truck. Great, great ribs, by the way, we passed that on, little plug for Stevie. So, that was the initial location that was investigated by, uh, by the architects. We retained the services of FGMA through a RFQ process. They did identify problems with the site, in particular, uh, the depth at which they had to go in order to try and reach anything other than fill materials. So, that site was abandoned. And we made the decision that we would take a look at the site, which is the original Butterworth Park. If you go back in history and look at it, basically from Twelfth Avenue all the way up to, I believe that's Sixteenth, right there at the corner where the lab towers are at. So, the Butterworth Park, uh, was at one time sold, redeveloped, and all of the medical offices that were placed there supported the doctors and physicians who were in the original hospital that was where, on, on Seventh, which is the Seventh and Sixth, actually. So, we began looking at pursuing this alternate site. We worked with FGMA. FGMA came back and provided us with at least three or four different scenarios in terms of how that property could be utilized to build a new central fire station, either a one-story building or a combination one-story and partial two-story building. They identified the site, and we made the decision that we would move forward with property acquisition. So, we have spent time having the property appraised. The, the numbers in front of you tonight are the appraisal prices for the properties that were reported to the council privately before they became public. Those property appraisals, uh, and those offers, uh, resulted in letters of intent and in purchase sales agreement, uh, mirroring the numbers that were in our appraisal reports. So, I'm real happy about that. It took a lot of gymnastics to get here tonight. The project itself, as you know, um, uh, will require about a year of architectural, architectural engineering, planning, and design, uh, once the properties are acquired in April. I believe the closing is April the eleventh, if I'm not mistaken. Once the properties have been secured, we would bring FGMA back to the table to discuss with the, with a, a working group, um, comprising members of the fire department and some other members, uh, that I'd like to see involved in the team. And we would go ahead and pursue, uh, the design process, the design. The project itself would be timed and coordinated, so that as the debt that is currently in our general, uh, general fund, as that debt falls off, the new debt would be incurred. So, you're creating a level debt situation. We're not looking at increasing property taxes to do the project. So, it's timed, and it has been timed, as a part of all of our three-year financial budgets that we prepare the last several years, take place twenty-six and twenty-seven. And that's when the debt actually does fall off. So, we're recommending approval of all three purchases, or it's actually all, yeah, all three purchases from three different property owners, uh, in the order presented tonight.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Mr. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. We, we've been discussing this for four years, uh, as, as my tenure, uh, this council and the previous council. It's ha- it's been discussed for twenty years, uh, with previous councils as well. This has been a, a known need, and, um, heaven knows, I tried to save money by renovating the existing building, but that just wasn't in the cards. It just really wasn't an option. And I'm really thankful for the diligence and attention to, um, fiscal conservatism that the staff has put forward, especially with the, the debt falling off and accumulating the new debt, so it would have no impact on the tax situation. So, I just wanted to, uh, applaud the staff for that and, um, thank it for everyone's hard work, as we're kind of rounding the corner on this one.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Castro?
Um, I just, I remember one of the very first things that we did when we, um, set our, became council members, is that we took tours of the different buildings and different areas of the, of the city. And I remember going into the, um, the fire station and just kind of seeing the difference, um, between the police station and the fire station. And you can tell that it was at the end of its, um, at, at its life at that time. And I think that any, like, uh, Mr. Timian said, you know, we could try to, um, renovate and upgrade, but those are just gonna be Band-Aids, um, and it would cost us more, I think, in the long run. So, I'm really excited to kind of see this come, come, come to us for approval, because it's definitely, it's definitely time, it's probably been time for the last, you know, a couple decades. So, um, I'm happy to see this coming to us.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think, um, yeah, the need for new building is very obvious for anyone who's going through there. I also appreciate the diligence we've had in looking for a site that actually makes sense. We have had a tremendous growth in calls that are coming in, uh, for ambulance and for health service, even from, from fire trucks. And, and we know that's an ongoing need and only an increasing need. And so, when we conduct the study that says, you know, central fire was out of place for where it needs to be to serve the city. And so, the ability to secure a site that's going to give us better response times and better coverage is, is going to save people's lives. And I think that's something that, uh, you know, we certainly can't just pick up and move a fire station as population shifts every chance, but this is a good time for us to line those needs up and make sure that we're also thinking about the Moline of the future, and how we grow and how we're gonna serve, uh, long beyond the time that we're sitting in these chairs.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Eight point eight, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a purchase and sale agreement with eight-three-three Sixteenth Avenue, Illinois, Owner LLC for an unimproved property, uh, located near Seventh Street and Sixteenth Avenue in Moline, Illinois, for a purchase price of forty-eight thousand dollars, and authorizing all appropriate city officials, officers, corporation council, and staff to do all things necessary to complete each of the city's responsibilities and enforce each of the city's expected benefits as referred to in such agreement.
Again, recommending approval.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Eight point nine, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a purchase and sale agreement with Hybrid Medical Group LLC for property located at fourteen-ten Seventh Street, Moline, Illinois, for a purchase price of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and authorizing all appropriate city officials, officers, corporation council, and staff to do all things necessary to complete each of the city's responsibilities and enforce each of the city's expected benefits as referred to in such agreement.
Once again, recommending approval, and also, uh, thanking, um, Jonathan Fox, uh, for working with me diligently, uh, over the last several months to ensure that this particular purchase took place.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. And with that, we close out our council meeting, call our, or, excuse me, our cow, and call our regular council meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do you have an invocation, Mr. McNeil?
I do not, Your Honor.
Roll call, please?
Alderperson Murphy?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Razak?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Finch?
Present.
McNeil?
Present.
Castro?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, I request the approval of Committee of the Whole and Council Meeting Minutes of March four, twenty twenty-five, and appointments made at Committee of the Whole on March eighteen, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Roll call, please? Alderperson McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
All right, we're to number fourteen, is our public comment, Chief.
Uh, we have one, Your Honor, Jacqueline Dooley.
I'll state my name first.
And, and I'm, and I'll do the right thing and remind you, there's three minutes, and they'll remind me on the clock.
That's okay, that's okay. I'll state my name first, Jacqueline Dooley, and I'm a Moline homeowner, and I've lived here for over, uh, fifteen years. That's who I am. Okay, the reason why I wanted the comment here versus before is because I wanted to talk about fifteen point one, and I thought it would be a little bit more in order. Okay? I know the fact that there's been a discussion in the city council of the tobacco ordinances, with tobacco, uh, sales, and also the vaping. I would like to put a spin on this. I don't know if this is possible, as a Moline homeowner, but I'd like to put a spin. Uh, I'm, I'm also for pro-business for Moline. I know the fact that Moline has to make money, we have, I'm pro-business. I'd like it to be where you would not have a restriction, so it'd be one mile from an educational facility. What I mean by that would be Moline High School, Moline Elementary Schools. Mo- just one mile, and then you can have a tobacco, uh, sale. And the kind of tobacco that I'm talking about, it's not a gas station, okay? I'm talking about where they have vaping and all this kind of stuff, and all the instruments before that. Now, that's what I would like to have. Now, I also do not want these businesses to be very competitive. And what I mean by very competitive, I'd like them to be a mile between each other. Okay, now, if you can't do that, maybe we could have a half a mile between each other. And it really does, it's up to the city council how many tobacco and vape areas that you want. Doesn't bother me at all, okay? It's up to you, the city council. But I would like you to think about it, where they're supposed to be. And the type that I'm basically talking about is not like the grocery stores or, you know, the gas stations. It's more of the vaping thing. And that's my comment. And this is because of that, I just don't think it's necessary that Moline has that types of businesses, or strip mall. Five years ago, the kids can walk over here. And I do recognize that you've gotta be, you know, a certain age to have all this. But I just don't like the congregation. And, uh, now, I don't know if this is even possible, too. Maybe you can have a no vape area, which would mean, there's a vape company, you know, thin here. They just couldn't stand outside, and they all vape. That's all. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I made my thirty, my thirty.
Thank you. All right, any further public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to consent agenda. Your Honor, I request the approval of consent agenda items fifteen point one through fifteen point three, and sixteen point one through sixteen point six inclusively.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Roll call, please? Alderperson McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
Non-consent agenda resolutions. Item number eighteen point one, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement of purchase and sale with Metropolitan Towers LLC for two properties located at fifteen hundred Seventh Street, Moline, Illinois, and fifteen oh eight Seventh Street, Moline, Illinois, for a purchase price of seven hundred and five thousand five hundred dollars, and authorizing all appropriate city officials, officers, corporation council, and staff to do all things necessary to complete each of the city's responsibilities and enforce each of the city's expected benefits as referred to in such agreement.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number 18.2, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a purchase and sale agreement with 833 Sixteenth Avenue IL Owner LLC for an unimproved property located near Seventh Street and Sixteenth Avenue in Moline, Illinois for a purchase price of $48,000 and authorizing all appropriate city officials, officers, corporation council and staff to do all things necessary to complete each of the city's responsibilities and enforce each of the city's expected benefits as referred to in such agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number 18.3, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a purchase and sale agreement with Hybrid Medical Group LLC for property located at 1410 Seventh Street, Moline, Illinois for a purchase price of 460,000 and authorizing all appropriate city officials, officers, corporation council and staff to do all things necessary to complete each of the city's responsibilities and enforce each of the city's expected benefits as referred to in such agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number 18.4, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a licensing agreement with 1848 Entertainment LLC, DBA Pub 1848, for use of public right-of-way for use of the Bass Street Landing Public Plaza for the outdoor service of alcoholic liquor and food from April 19, 2025 to September 30, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Oops, sorry, I didn't see. Yes.
I, I had had further conversations with council member Schmidt regarding this and I've sent out a, an email to all of you, but council member Schmidt had asked me to give a little bit more explanation here at the meeting. As all of you already read in my email, the entire arrangement of the ordinances provides for the situation that council member Schmidt had asked about previously, that Pub 1848 or anyone else with the licensing agreement for Bass Street Landing, there will be another one coming forward for Stony Creek at a meeting coming in April. They get a license to sell alcohol on Bass Street Landing, that particular property. That does not give them unlimited license to sell alcohol there because there is also a licensing provision for individuals wanting to have private events or public events. In the event of a private event such as a wedding, those individuals decide whether or not they have alcohol served at that and they can bring in anyone else that is properly licensed, which could include numerous other individual vendors. So essentially, by the license agreement, the wording that it has, when combined with our ordinances, the issue of deciding for private events whether or not you're going to have Pub 1848 serving alcohol is entirely up to that individual. The additional information that probably none of you have heard, certainly I didn't give it to you, but I found it out since I gave you the, the email, we actually haven't had a private event through all of 24 on that property, nor do we have any scheduled for 25 currently. There have only been public events on that property. Those were open to everybody and so there would have been presumably somebody serving alcohol. It may have been Pub 1848, it may have been someone else. I don't know the details with regards to those events happening in 24 and, and what are scheduled in 25.
Thank you. Anything further from the council on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Non-consent agenda, first reading ordinances. Item number 19.1, an ordinance amending chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section 20-5109, parking time limit slash restrictions established, appendix 16, one-hour parking restrictions in non-metered zones by including 1721 Fifth Avenue, two on-street stalls.
Motion to advance the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, that motion carries and that's all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Okay. A couple items for miscellaneous business. Next week, a team of us will be in Washington DC to lobby, basically, or raise grant, or now they're called Tiger Grants.
Build.
Build.
It was Tiger, then, then raised.
I couldn't tell you the new acronym, what it stands for, but this is for our Downtown Riverfront, so we've done careful planning, very careful planning to, to make sure that's a, as successful a trip as possible. I will say, you shared, Ashley shared the list of red flag words, coming straight from the Secretary of Transportation, I believe. I will share that with you via email. It is a very extensive list of words and, in my opinion, disappointing, but our team is an excellent team and we have a great consultant that's helping us and I think that they've done a great job trying to put together the right grant application with the right language and all of that. So I wanted you to be aware of that. We have some meetings coming up. I know older woman Murphy has award meeting coming in April and I've scheduled two, or we're waiting on the second one, but one for the east side, one for the west side, listening posts as I've done in the past, but we'll hopefully anchor the conversation and upcoming strategic plan talks, right? Some, some main topics there that we need to talk through, maybe get the word out a little bit more about the grocery tax, having gone into, or willing, going into effect next year, not, not new, right? We've all talked about this multiple times, but as we can see, we, we maybe need to continue to get the information to our constituents so that there's a real, genuine understanding of the impact and the conversation going all the way back to last October when we had budget discussions, et cetera. So I'm hoping those are really helpful meetings. I think we will also be needing to look at our, we had some basic operating principles that we ushered in with our strategic plan four years ago and so we need to be thinking about those if you want to take a look at that on our, our website, start thinking how you might, if we need to alter anything or want to keep them all the same, that kind of stuff is a council decision. There was one other item, I may remember it as we go around, but I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Murphy.
Yes, I've been asked to remind everyone that the COVID-19 meals for the holiday vouchers will be available Saturday, April 5th at Moline City Hall and the doors will open at 8:00 AM and close at 11:00 AM until the vouchers run out. If there's any questions, call 309-524-2044. The housing, Moline.
Great, thank you.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Your Honor. I, this week I went to the, gosh, I can't think of what it was referred to, but Humility Homes had an informational about the, how they're dealing with the changes in the federal government and the granting structure. If I recall, around 40% of the funds that power Humility Homes come from the federal government. Now, this is great, or it's better than it used to be, which was nearly 100%. They've diversified their funding pool over the years and are continuing to do so, but if they were to no longer receive federal funding, they would be able to operate as they currently do for about nine months. And then after that, they would have to start selling properties. Luckily, they acquired a large number of properties, but people live in these properties. So like, that's a, that's a last resort. Moline did receive special attention for the, the funding that we have given for the emergency shelters over the years and obviously city contributions and county contribution, the state contribution, there's a lot of different pools for these that, that benefit the organization, which is primarily focused on keeping people off the street because that just has a, a negative impact on schools, police, just fire, emergency rooms, everything. It, it's a, it's a force multiplier. So I just kind of wanted to bring that to attention. If you were not able to attend, that will, that conversation's continuing to happen and one of the best ways that we can help as individuals is by donating clothes because when you donate clothes, there is a government match for that money as it's sold through their thrift store. So any donations, there is a government match for it. So whether it's clothes or money or anything like that.
A federal match or a state Iowa?
I believe there's a little bit of, a little bit of all of the above, but I do believe that there is federal through HUD and through a number of other programs. But, so their thrift store is right next to their headquarters. Just donating clothes not only can be sold and can be given, given to people who are trying to start over and, and need that kind of thing. So think about that when you're, maybe before going to Goodwill, it's an option. Thank you, Your Honor.
Ms. Finch? Mr. McNeil?
Excited to see nonprofits and civic organizations getting behind the B-City Initiative. I think this spring, Moline Rotary is planning to install at least one pollinator garden and Boys and Girls Club will be installing a pollinator garden, so it's good early momentum.
Great, thanks for letting us know. Okay, I remembered my item. Along those lines, we did find out from KJ today in, today in community and economic development that the HUD funding for 2025.
The current year.
Current year remains. So that hasn't gone anywhere. So that's helpful, but we don't know what the next budget's like.
There's no increase, it remains flat for the year, but it's better than what's happening across other federal agencies.
Yeah. And then I just wanted to let you know that I, remind you if you didn't recall that I, we do meet with the school district quarterly. We had a good conversation about the needs they had and have been asking for with regard to the traffic and where the buses pick up and drop off. MetroLink has finally moved, or will be in, I think it's April 8th, some, that week, will be moving that major pickup spot to behind the high school on 26th Avenue where there's a cutout for buses, where it's way less traffic compared to Avenue of the City, so the safety will increase. And we're, we're glad of that and we're glad for the good lines of communication with Chief Galt and the school district as well. But we had good conversation about that as well as finances because, you know, we're always looking at the property tax.
That's good. That's really great.
Yeah.
Mr. Vito?
Thank you. I'll be, I'll be brief. I've already mentioned the trip to Washington DC to meet with our elected officials on the Illinois side as well as potentially the elected officials on the Iowa side, Ernst and Grassley in particular, as well as meeting with the new secretary, secretary staff and maybe even the secretary himself, who knows if he's available. So we'll see if Mr. Duffy is available. So that will take place Wednesday, Thursday, Friday next week. As far as the April roundtable, the plans are to bring Andrea Carbine here from Michigan to meet with the council to present a shortened, lighter version, but you will have access to the full version of the study that they conducted on the public marketplace for the city of Moline. So on April 15th, that will be about an hour-long discussion and presentation to give you the opportunity, you will, you will receive the, the study in advance, so I would take the time to look at it carefully. Bottom line is, is that the area of the city, the public marketplace can be supported. All of the elements are there, but I'm going to let her explain that in detail to you. It's just a question of location and, and, and timing as to when something like that would actually take off. So anyhow, that is the, one of the principal items that we're going to be looking at April 15th, so I hope you can all be there. I know it's tax day, get your taxes done ahead of time, please. Don't use that as an excuse not to come, you know, as painful as it can be. TurboTax is a great friend, so, you know, very simple. And that's all I have.
Any other staff? Yes, Chief?
One of the many responsibilities of a fire chief and a police chief is to be the voice of our, our members. And the actions taken tonight to push forward the new central fire station, I just want to, on behalf of myself and, and my members, say thank you. As person Castro stated, it's been 20 years since we've been discussing building a new central fire station and this is just one more example of the commitment that you've all shown towards public safety and I wanted to say thank you.[1706.86]